Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the East Bridgewater Planning Board for Monday, February 3, 2025. We have in attendance our board, our regular board members, Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, Roy Gardner, and myself, Kevin Riley, this evening. A few items on our agenda tonight. First of all, we have several minutes for approval. Those are the minutes of the meetings of 11:18, 12:16, and 1:06. Assuming that there are no comments or questions, the Chair would entertain a motion to waive the formal reading of those minutes and accept them in the form presented.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner, is there a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Tedesco. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 That's the unanimous vote of all members present and voting. Couple of items on our other agenda, if you will. First of all, with regard to Meadowbrook, the Board of Appeals, the Chapter 48 matter, I would indicate that since the last meeting, a letter that was approved by you guys at that meeting was indeed transmitted under Mr. Gardner's signature to the Board of Appeals. It was incorporated into their record of the meetings at the last meeting in, I believe, the second week of January. And that, for the time being, I believe, takes care of the Planning Board's responsibilities in terms of comment. If there are any questions from the ZBA or further comments based on changes that may be made in the, in the project, that would come back for, for further review and comment. But at this point, I believe that that can drop off the agenda. Roy, any thoughts on that?
I did have four of the items that I think, I wanted to entertain a possibility of writing a letter number two.
So if you're gonna do that, I'm gonna...
But, but we're kind of in a catch-22 here, so we've only got four members. If you absent a room, then we don't have a quorum present.
True.
So I, I think we'll just have to put that in advance and see if the track meeting on Wednesday wants to... One of the things that I realized, I've had some additional talks with several other members of boards, they're having great difficulty figuring out what their current drawing set actually is, because we've received so many drawings and there's no master index. So it's extremely difficult to figure out what the latest drawings are. In addition, we have multiple drawings in the set with the same title, revision and date on them, that aren't the same. So I came up with a list of what I would call good engineering practice, which we would require for anything filed with the Planning Board. A table of context with information such as drawing number, title of the drawing, revision and revision date. So there'd be a table on page one saying, here's all the current information. The other ones are things that they've, they've sent in an informal letter with an attachment that's unlabeled and unmarked, just a text attachment. For a clear updated table of parking by building and by unit. Clear updated table of unit configurations. And itemized lists of specific waivers requested under mass general law. Some of that they included the night before the meeting, the last meeting, but again, it was attachment to an email, and it was unmarked text document. There was no title, there was no headings, there was no letterhead, no page numbers, just four or five pages of text. I'm gonna put that letter together and forward it to the, to the ZBA anyway, because all that requests is they follow good engineering practice. It's, it's not really a Planning Board issue with, with the actual project itself, it's just that we're all having great difficulty figuring out what the current proposal really is. We have over 100 drawings now, in some cases, three or four of the same drawing with, with great difficulty sorting out which is the latest one, because of a lack of a master index and the, and the lack of clear dates on them.
So do we want to hold that on to the next agenda, Roy? And just keep it as a, as a matter that we're following? Or do you just want to submit that letter?
What I, what I think we'd like to do is submit that letter and, and just at the end of the letter saying, we're following this and we'll be further discussing it at our next meeting, which I won't be available for, because I'll be out of, I'll be traveling out of the country for our next meeting. So that's one of the reasons I wanted to at least get the, the letter drafted. I did know, we did receive a notice that the planned ZBA meeting that was given date and time previously has been moved. Not 100% sure to what that date is. We need to follow up on that.
Just have it, following up on what you just said, I was under the impression you weren't gonna be here at the next meeting, at this meeting, actually, tonight, because I'm not gonna be at the next meeting either. So Rachel's gonna take over and handle, handle that meeting, apparently.
What is the date of that?
That's March 3.
March 3.
I will be out of state.
I think I'm sick that night, too.
So we can decide, there is no meeting on the 17th, obviously because of the holiday, 17th of this month, because of the holiday, the next meeting would be the 3rd. So we can rearrange that.
I'll, I'll double check to make sure, but I'm pretty sure that, from my recollection of our agenda, that the 4th is the day we actually fly back.
Yeah, that's the same with me, exactly, the day after, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll figure that out in the meanwhile, but I just, so, okay. So, so much with, with Meadowbrook. Let me just jump down to Leila Estates. I would report that, as was voted at the last meeting, a letter was sent to the developer with regard to the, you know, follow-up on the matter of the street lighting. That letter did give a period of 21 days within which to respond with either a program for when that and how that lighting would be installed, as was required into the original subdivision plans, or alternatively, request a waiver for, you know, some other program as to, as to how the lights would be handled. And Roy, I believe that the developer was in touch, or you've spoken with the developer? Am I correct in that?
Yes, the, the, the feedback I've gotten so far is the developer's working both with his engineer and National Grid, to come up with a strategy of where to put the lights, since there, there is, we've confirmed, there is no bases installed for those streetlights.
Oh, yeah.
So National Grid was gonna, as I understand it, was gonna work together with the, with the engineer to try and sort out the best place to put those, so that they can come up with a, because although National Grid doesn't do the actual installation of the bases and the wiring, they have to approve it before it gets done. So the applicant, Charlie Macy, has indicated, as best I understood, our two telephone discussions, that as soon as he gets an approved location, then he will go ahead and hire his contractor to come in and do the actual physical laying of the cables and installing the base. And they're probably gonna end up relatively close to existing property lines where the boxes are now, that typically, and I think they're, the boxes straddle, each two properties have a box in between on the property line.
So it looks like they're, they're gonna go ahead with streetlights, not the solar lights that they had initially?
Well, the, the option, the option was offered to him to get a sign-on from all of the residents in, in the, at the current owners, owners of the houses. If they were all willing to sign on, then the other option could be explored, but the other option also wasn't accounted for during the installation, because he didn't, he didn't account for any type of wiring out to his, an individual light at the, at the street front by each driveway. There is no wiring there either. So his proposal was to put solar lights on there that would automatically come on. Now, part of the problem with that is those become owned by the homeowner.
Ah, right.
So...
That's an expense.
My experience with outside solar lighting is a four or five, I've had four or five different ones, two of them worked great and they've worked for years.
Yeah.
You know, self-charging solar, solar batteries in them, the other three worked for less than six months, so...
Yeah, so you can't count on them?
I don't, I don't see how that works. But in any case, he said he is working with a, with a, I will follow up, I will follow up again with him this week and see what progress has been made, ask him to provide a written, an email or a written response with it, with a schedule update.
Yeah, I think that would be, would be helpful, just to, to keep, you know, a record of that in our file, so that, you know, in the event that there are questions or comments, you know, we have something to substantiate the efforts that the Board has made. And obviously, this just really came to the attention of the Board back in December, so I think that, you know, we've, there's certainly progress that's been made and hopefully, you know, allowing, allowing for the fact that National Grid doesn't move fast for anybody, you know, hopefully it can, can get done sooner rather than later. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So we have, we have Charlie with us, can we go over the, at least two, I think two things that he's interested, I'm pretty sure, in discussing with us?
Was that one of them?
I actually, no, I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay, that's, that was gonna be our last, our last item, right?
I wanna, I wanna make the MBTA zoning proposal that, that's draft right now is our last item, but Charlie's more than willing, welcome to stay for that one as well, but...
I have to be in the building until eight, so it doesn't matter, as long as I have a seat someplace.
So if I could, I've, I've, I've read through these documents, Charlie has sent us two of them. The first one we can touch on, I think, because it's all completed, is the MBTA Communities' 2025 submission. So basically, it's a, it's a fill-in-the-blanks forms that come from Department of Housing. I'll get the acronym wrong, because they keep changing it, but...
The agency?
Yeah, yeah, I guess that's the current one, but... So did I misread the email that came with that, Charlie, that said, we're supposed to submit that?
I am.
You are, that's what I thought, okay.
I mean, not that I'm thrilled necessarily, but it said, they listed who's supposed, you know, from each group, who's supposed to do it, and they said, you've got a town administrator, that's the person, so...
Yeah.
So do you want us to, to say that that's okay, for you to do it?
If you're happy with it, if you're not, if you want changes, I'm, I, you know, I told the Board, my Board, that, you know, I consider this sort of a draft, in the sense of it will be the final, we don't do anything else, but I try to be as loose as possible in terms of not defining exactly what we're doing or when we were gonna do it.
Yes, so...
For instance, it doesn't require that I list all lots of what, how exactly we're in a zone, but conceptually, I said, okay, you know, still Route 18, still the west side of North Bedford Street, still the, we're gonna aim for May 12th, for town meeting to get a vote.
So I'm, I'm fine, I did read through that.
Yeah.
It is very generic document.
Yeah.
It just basically confirms we are moving ahead, so, so I'll put a motion on the table to, to officially notify Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen that that document is fine, to, to get forwarded on to...
I, I read over it and it put fine to me, yeah.
So motion is made by Mr. Gardner to notify Town Administrator and Board of, Select Board that the Planning Board is in agreement with the submitted plan of action for MBTA Communities' compliance. Second to the motion?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Phillips, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous vote of all members present and voting. Go ahead, Roy.
So, so the next one, this one's a little more complicated, I believe, but... So this one is a letter we received from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Now, it's a two-page letter that has several links in it. And basically, what those links are, I believe, is best I can get from, from looking at these and, and going over the links themselves, is that they want us to update the affordable housing information in our town. It's more, more complicated than that, but that's basically where it's, what it's aiming So I have intended to, and I, as I understand this, Charlie, this is the Planning Board's This one, right?
No, I know what you're talking about. I don't know, I'd have to go look, if it went, I didn't, it didn't come to us, let's put it that way.
You can play the role, role of local official.
Yeah, the, the way, the way it's worded is, is a bit of gobbledygook, and it's exactly unclear to me, in terms of definitively, who did this go to and who's supposed to do it?
No, all I can do is it didn't come to us.
Local official. Local official.
There's a paragraph in here somewhere that says it, it goes to, oh, there it is.
So it went to all four?
Correspondence is being mailed to the mayor, town manager, administrator, zoning board of appeals, and planning director slash department in each community as applicable. So they put all that in there, then they add "as applicable," so that kind of weasels out that I'm not sure who they send it to now. But in any case, it showed up on my email and, and I'd have to go back to look and see how it came to my email, but it did. But in any, in any case, it, it looks like a Planning Board type of thing, at least to begin with?
Then it says it's a coordinated response, which makes me think it's all the Boards.
It's all of it's...
Well, because I, I believe, based on some of the forms I looked at, the housing authority has to provide some information in this as well. But I'll, I'll, I'll try and, I'll try and follow up further, to delve into the nuts and bolts of the, the form, that's a little bit of a misnomer, it's not really a form, it's an online fill-in-the-blanks, but it's fairly, it's fairly complicated. Yeah, so it came out the 14th, I don't think I got it until a week or so ago.
Oh.
Well, it says it's dated the 14th, I'm not sure when it actually came out, but...
Yeah.
So I'll look that over and I'll update the Board.
But how much, how much of that information does a matter of course with, you know, the Planning Board have, really?
Well, the other thing is that I'm fairly sure whatever report was sent in last year, we haven't changed one iota. It's not as if we've developed more subsidized housing here in East Bridgewater in the last 12 months.
Yeah, do you think it'd be possible for us to track down the subsidized housing inventory, the SHI inventory? I think it's two years ago, because I think these are updated every two years, biennial it says. Well, the only, the only reason I, I brought that up is because planning is listed as one of the people that gets it.
So there's already been, in, in the past, we have counted the units?
Yeah, we do, we do, we have submitted a subsidized housing inventory regularly and, and this says biennial update, I don't know if it's always been a biennial update process or not, but... One of the things they did ask, and I think we're covered as planning, that it kind of includes ZBA, because there was a section in there for pending, if I, I blew through the form fairly quickly, I didn't try and fill it in, I just kind of scrolled through the thing. There is a section for, for currently pending Chapter 40Bs.
Okay.
In there. So, and I think this gets to the, the somewhat obtuse way that they define subsidized housing inventory.
Ah.
Well, basically subsidized housing inventory, first of all, includes the percent of, of income restricted housing in a 40B, it includes that. It includes virtually all housing that is directly subsidized in one way or another by either the town, the state, through the housing authority system. And, and two other things, as, as I understand it. They want to know, how many housing units do we have in the town of East Bridgewater that is subsidized for the residents through one, a government agency of some form? So the, it doesn't really have anything to do with the price of the housing or the cost of the housing.
Uh-huh.
It's subsidized by somebody, either directly, like the housing authority units would be, or indirectly, like 40B would be. 40B, the, the, the units are permitted by the state, but the subsidy is a implicit subsidy based on the fact that they have to be sold at, at a defined market price based on the, the community. But I'll, I'll look further into that after Wednesday, when I get back from my current assignment. Okay?
Yeah, so if you, whatever, you keep us posted, and if...
Yes, I will.
If we need to do anything, in the meanwhile, if you need any assistance, let me know. And otherwise, if we coordinate with the Town Administrator's Office and such, we should be able to meet that March, March 1st?
March 1st.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
All right, so I, I, I think we all know, because we've had this discussion, I believe, at our last meeting, just a general discussion, regarding MBTA 2025, as the state is calling it. So there is, there is a whole bunch of confusion here, because the state sent a, a letter out, or which I saw, an email, saying that the rules and regulations have been promulgated under emergency order and immediately effective. That's actually false, because they received an instruction stating that they had to fix that announcement, because they can't legally do that. There is a public hearing process they have to follow. The implication from, from what I read at, at the, one of the three different mass emails that I get, I don't know whether it was the Commonwealth one or the, the planning handout, handout that they do regularly, but in any case, what it basically said is, and I'll read between the lines, that nothing's gonna change, despite the fact that they have to go through a hearing process. So the dates are now, I, I think that the, the date we have to have an adopted policy is, is now, I believe, first week of June.
Okay.
July, July 14th.
Is it July now?
July 14th.
July 14th.
So they issued their new regulations on the 14th of January, six months from there, they gave everybody who was non-compliant six months, and then 30, is it, 30 days, I think, to submit an action plan, which I just looked at.
So what I've, what I've done is, is, given what happened at, at prior town meeting and given the extremely negative feedback we had with the downtown district...
Yeah.
So I've taken the, the northerly overlay district, which I think we were calling MBTA North, redone it slightly, and, and have now entitled it MBTA 2025. What I've done is, is added the two town parcels which are at, which are at the bottom of that, those being parcels 109, 6, and 7, that's these two at the bottom.
Where, where is that? If you were to go?
That's the Whitman line right there.
So that's...
Oh.
That's Route 18, that's Winter Street on this side.
So it's in the same general area?
Same area.
Same area.
Basically just expanded by a couple of pieces.
The next two budding parcels as you go south.
Yeah. And the town currently owns them?
Yes. Now, the rationale behind that is this. The 40B Meadowbrook realized that that's the, the state slash town wetlands map compiled together and on the GIS maps we use.
Yeah.
That the actual wetlands was almost double what, what is on the map. So, so the feeling is we needed to expand the, the property enough to try and come up with a reasonable, what we would expect, we as the Planning Board would expect would be the actual physical development of the property, so that we make sure that we could fit at a minimum 750 units, or at a maximum, I should say, there's space for 750, but the statutory number we're targeted to meet is 10% of current housing, current single-family housing units in the community. So this table hasn't changed, that's the one that defines what the unit sizes would be and what the dimensional requirements for those unit sizes would be. Wish they had a scroll bar instead of having to pick a number. So the residential units would start at 1, 10,000 square feet, go all the way up to 12,134,800 square feet. Those would be the, the different structure sizes that we would allow. That hasn't changed from the original proposal in the prior town meeting. This table is still basically the same, except for the last two, or the two 119, added 6 and 7, those are those two bottom town, town-owned parcels.
Aye.
That added about just, just under eight, eight acres, of which roughly 50% is gonna be wetland.
Oh.
40 to 50% could potentially be wetland. So this is one sheet that I put together that shows the methodology, the top one is just the, the parcels. This is an explanation of, of the sizing methodology that I used, based on some, some guidelines on, on heavily impacted by wetlands areas, so the required minimum land area to be rezoned, MBTA shall be available to support a gross unit count of 750 and a net unit count of 500. That comes out of the, the state guidelines we've been given for an adjacent district. The gross area of this proposed zone is 151 acres. Protected wetlands and water bodies within this area is projected to be an estimate of plus or minus 40 to 60% of that total gross area. Now, that could be even higher, depending on how conservation sets up the, the no-touch zones. They tend to be higher in, in streams, and there is, there's seasonal streams, I believe, but, but conservation under state law has an authority to expand the, the no-touch area on, on streams, including seasonal streams.
Okay.
So, so at least theoretically, as item four says, the projected net upland and remaining, and remaining available and to, to build on is, is plus or minus 60 acres. And at the maximum of 15 units per acre, the projected build-out would be 906 units. With the build-out, with the build-out being some expected mix of housing sizes, single-family up to the 15-unit, multifamily, the expected build-out would be projected to be in the 500-unit range. And that's a samp, this is a sample of what I would project, based on what we think the marketplace for East Bridgewater housing would be. Now, one of the reasons I expect that the 1 and 2 unit, and even the 4-unit housing would be the ones that get built the most, is, is, is because of several key factors here. Number one, this is all gonna be private development. Number two, that private development has to be done under subdivision control. Number three, under subdivision control, the buildings that can be readily built Number three, under subdivision control, the buildings that can be readily built and sold by contractors in a relatively short timeline and with relatively reasonable capital financing requirements would be those 1, 2, and 4-unit buildings. Everything above that starts getting into a, a longer timelines with significantly more capital required. So this is a best guess, guess of, of that area. Working off the, what we expect to be the upland at roughly 60 acres would, would generate what I estimate it to be a total of 562 residential units. Now, keeping in mind that this area is also included within the 40B that's currently being proposed by ZBA. Information I got from housing tables that, that I could see, multiple towns have already included existing 40Bs in their rezoning. And as best I can tell from, from the limited information that the, the state has provided, those towns are listed as having met their requirement. So I, I, I don't want to comment in specific detail as exactly what that means, because you can't figure that out from the state website. So my belief is that the 40B units would be counted as, as these, if they're within the MBTA zoning district. Prior, prior to, prior to them physically being built.
So it meets, it would meet, uh, help meet the requirement?
Yes.
Yeah, and then?
Now, as, as I hinted at, I think, and I'm not sure I clearly said it, but there is no second district anymore. It's just a single district.
Right.
Now, what we do with downtown is still an open issue. We as a planning board still, still should be recommending something. But it was, it was clear from, from multiple previous years that unless we had a firm plan of what to do there, and unless that firm plan had something to do with housing, both as needs demanded by both federal and state funding sources, then it would be unlikely that we'd get any federal and state funding to do anything with it. Additionally, based on that court case, if we don't adopt this, then we certainly wouldn't be getting any grant funding for tho, that property regardless of what we are proposing to do. The other, the other, the other problem here is, is that based on the Supreme Court decision, as a planning board, we took an oath that we have to follow the law. The law now says we have to adopt this. So, so my view is we have no alternative than to take this to town meeting with a recommendation for adoption. Because there's now no longer a question as to whether the law is valid and whether the law really requires us to do it or not. The Supreme Court has, has answered those three questions.
So this goes to town meeting in May?
The annual town meeting, which, which I, I think, based on, where was that?
May 12th.
May 12th is the current date, annual town meeting is scheduled.
Yeah. Get it?
Now, we, we will, we, we will make a sincere request from the planning board formally to the selectmen, that this not be the last article on town meeting warrant. It is traditionally, town meeting warrant, the last articles of zoning. We need this to be much higher than the last article. But we'll make that formal request to the, to the, to the, to the board of selectmen.
So giving it a higher priority?
I, I don't want to call it a higher priority, but anybody who's been to town meeting as many times as I have know that after, a significant number of people leave after the, the town budget is voted.
Okay.
In fact, a significant number of people leave after the school budget is voted, which isn't the end of the town budget.
Gotcha.
But another significant number leave when the end of the town budget is voted.
Okay.
So, and typically zoning articles are anywhere from 10 to 20 articles after a whole bunch of other miscellaneous articles. And I don't mean to say that those articles aren't important, they certainly are. All town meeting articles are important, but.
But we want the maximum number of people to be there to, to vote?
Well, I think, given the importance of this, and if, if, if we don't vote that in, then the attorney general has a right to sue the town.
Yeah, okay.
In a relatively simple case with only four issues, and they were all fairly straightforward and clear issues. It cost Milton almost a third of a million dollars for that case. That was out-of-pocket legal fees. And the state Supreme Court has basically said that the attorney general can use almost any enforcement that they wish. And it is not limited to the, the original two or three grants that were listed in the original rules and regulations. As I read the state, the state Supreme Court decision, the only thing protected, at least to begin with, are the two major statutory funds that come to the town. That's the chapter 90, uh, chapter 90 monies in the, in the, the state education contribution based on however they, they, they sort that out. So the, so the, the state money for street, streets, chapter 90, and then the education funding. Those are statutory, done through the, the legislature, and there's, there's strict guidelines as to how you have to do those. Not to say that the attorney general can't try and, and impact those, but, but everything else is, is open. Four of the towns around us have already lost, uh, had grant applications, which were supposedly automatically approved for fire department equipment and for police department equipment.
Yeah.
All, all four towns in southeastern Mass that voted no had those grants sent back.
Yeah.
So Roy, a question and a comment. Question is, uh, last week, I believe it was, town administrator circulated a note indicating that the land area on parcel 1096 had been actually surveyed and was greater than what was shown. Is that incorporated in these numbers?
No, there was a, that was a relatively small mathematical difference. It isn't on this chart yet. But I, I will update it with the, with the updated, uh. Everything on this chart says of right now is from current assessors' records.
Um, and then the, the comment that I have, um, you know, my, my thinking here, I'm more toward, I guess, minimum compliance. And toward that end, um, I look at your letter G, the 12-unit buildings. And, um, I'm, I'm just not enthused about that, I guess.
Except those have, that has to be there, because we have to have at least one option that would amount to 15 units an acre. That's, that's statutory, based, based on the, on the requirement. The, the thought would be, hopefully, they wouldn't build any of those, but the other thought is that, that the buildings, as I've said multiple times, at the intersection of 106.
Those are what, 8, I think?
Those are 12-unit buildings.
Are they?
Yes, there's four of them. So there's 48 buildings on five acres of land there.
And it's, it, it's very pleasing to the eyes. It's, it's, it looks like it's been there forever.
Yeah, I mean, they.
It, it's, it looks really nice.
They, they did a very good job with those, there's no question about that.
Landscaping and just the way they put it into the land.
But I, I don't believe we have any chance of getting this accepted by the housing department at the state level without at least showing how we would get to the 15 units per acre if, if a private developer wanted to do that.
So obviously, as part of this process, we will have to go through the same motions that we went through last year, which would be coming up with a, a final draft of a proposal. Then advertising and holding a public hearing, and then making a recommendation for the spring, or the, yeah, springtime, uh, May town meeting. So it seems to me that there needs to be a little bit more engagement, um, in this one, so maybe, if our meetings are the, the April, first meeting in April, to schedule a public hearing for that meeting. Give us some time to do some outreach to.
Yeah, and we already have, uh, O'Callaghan Planning Council on board.
And that's, um, get his name, Josh?
Jason.
Jason?
Yeah.
As long as the planning board sends the form in OCPC.
Yeah, so, so actually, to cover that, why don't we, I'll make a motion that we notify O'Callaghan Planning Council that we, we will take them up on their offer of, and I've already notified them via email, but we should actually vote on it. So I'll make a motion that we notify O'Callaghan Planning Council that we, we will engage, engage their services for
purposes of assistance.
For support and assistance on the MBTA 2025 zoning.
So it's the motion by Mr. Gardner.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Tedesco. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So voted. So that would be the meeting, the only meeting in April is the 7th.
April 7th.
The only option, unless we're going to, you know, use a different date, but other, our only two meetings often that far in the future would be April 7th and May 5th.
Yeah, we can't wait.
I don't know that we want to make, we wait until May 5th, so.
We could certainly make a final recommendation on the May 5th meeting, but we don't, we don't want to open a hearing on May 5th.
Right, right.
So I would say we try.
We'll have a final draft on this April 7th to discuss.
We'll have it a lot before that, I would hope, but.
But we can't vote on it until that.
So I don't, I don't think what we have now will, will change very much. There's, there's a couple of things that, that I think we need to do a little bit of work with and make sure it's clear that, uh, the housing that goes into that area will be, will, should be required to use the town of East Bridgewater wastewater management system. We've been told multiple times in the past that that land is not suitable for housing without, without wastewater
Oh, yeah.
processing. That's one of the reasons that the wastewater system was designed to come in and start at that area and come down south. I mean, the long-term intent was to have it support the industrial properties. We need someplace to, to, to put the, the MBTA 2025. There is no other place in town
Right.
where we can zone a 50-acre parcel that has reasonable ability for high-density housing due to the high groundwater, poor soil qualities and, and all those things. I mean, one of the few areas we could, we could do it would be, would be down off in the area of Route 27 and Route 14. Problem with that is, is that a significant, a significant part of that area is impacted by Zone 2 aquifer protection. That doesn't mesh real well with, uh. The other problem we have is, is, uh, although it's border health responsibility under, under Mass general law, DEP is basically only permitting wastewater treatment systems that either are connected to an existing wastewater treatment system or do direct ground injection with the, with the, the outflow. Our system here that was built as part of the high school project, middle school, high school project, has direct ground injection. That's, that's being done up behind the central school. It would be impossible to do direct ground injection in that area, because there's no good soils, number one, and the water table is just below the surface. So, so that doesn't work there.
Yeah.
It, it also wouldn't work down off of the 2714 properties. Because this level of intensity wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be supported by the rules for, for a Zone 2 aquifer district. So I think this is the only place we can fit it. So.
Makes sense, yeah.
So that's all, that's all I've got on, on that, Mr. Chandler?
So, uh, let's, let's say that we're going to then, uh, reserve most of our, uh, April 7th meeting for a public hearing and gear up for that, um, with respect to MBTA communities bylaw. Ideally, at the next meeting on, uh, March 3rd, Mrs. Tedesco can present the, uh, draft of the, um, of the, uh, proposal and go through it line by line, if necessary.
Oh, what, oh. I, I am, uh, chairing that meeting?
That's right. I said you're going to go through the draft of the proposal and explain it line by line if necessary, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So you two will not be here?
That's right.
Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll double-check and confirm the exact date.
Okay, please.
But no, I, I think what, what, it, it's certainly, uh, in terms of circulating it, a draft to the board, that should happen relatively quickly. And then I think, as was done last time, it'll get posted on the town website, so that folks will be able to access that and look at what, I mean, it's, as Roy indicates, it's not much changed from
Okay.
From the last time through, other than the fact that it's limited to the one district rather than two, and it has a new name. That's pretty much.
New name, yeah, okay. Okay, okay.
Okay.
Charlie, thoughts or comments on that? Good with that?
I'm good.
So I think the only other thing we have for tonight is to endorse those plans for the, uh.
Yeah, for, um, for Laurel.
Yeah. The exp, the expansion of the 47 Brands building. Those plans are now ready to be endorsed, so.
Okay, so that we just, after the meeting, we will be signing them?
Yes.
Okay.
They're there on the table right now, so, and they're all rolled up, but.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Did we, did we satisfy everything we needed to on your behalf, at least for now?
Yeah.
Charlie, thank you. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, in the absence of.
One last thing, and I think I should touch, actually, two last things, real quick. So I'm in the, I'm working with several of the other town departments to collect some engineering numbers, to see how much engineering money we've spent. With, with the possible thought that, that we at some point, and most likely not for, for this annual budget, because the timelines are too tight, but although it might happen still, we, we hire a town engineer, a person, a physical person.
Yes.
To do the town engineering reviews instead of having a third-party firm. Uh, number one, the prices have gone up again with, with the new, the new merger or buyout or whatever you want to call it of land planning. Not land planning, uh, environmental partners.
Okay.
There's obviously significant advantage to having a engineer, a credentialed engineer in-house.
Yes.
So we are collecting some, some data on that, and we're working on it right now, actually. We've, there was a couple of emails today regarding the, to boil down how much engineering money we spent. So that's in the works. One other thing I think everybody should know is, is I was deposed in a court case related to the Castle Place property, which is the, the property adjacent to the Ritter Farm Golf Course. What's actually happened is, is I think as the board remembers, uh, we declined to sign a Form A plan there several times.
It's a question of land ownership?
Yes. Well, what was a legal lot and what wasn't a legal lot, and who really owned what. So I was deposed by three different attorneys. One, the attorney who's actually filed at the original court case for the owners at 64 Old Oak Street. An attorney for one of the, what I would call purported landowners for a small back parcel that, that was part of the original lot, and an attorney for the, for the Ritter interest. So there was a, about a three-hour de, deposition to go over really, I, I guess what. So there was about a three-hour deposition to go over really, I guess, what the problem was with the deeds, indicating why we didn't... It was an interesting route to take, because they didn't appeal our denial of the Form A, for obvious reasons, in my opinion, but... So what they did was basically force the abbot to file a court case, is it called Mandamus? What's it? I forget what it's technically called, but in any case, the abbot filed a court case, basically stating he owns the entire lot with 150 feet of frontage and 40,000 square feet.
Uh-huh.
Which I offered in the deposition, based on the deeds on record since 1963 at the registry, that is the lot. The intent of that Form A is to restore it to pre-1963 format.
Okay.
Which we know from our own recent court case that's just ended, you can't do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So we are not party to that case, technically. I was the one that was subpoenaed, I guess it's subpoenaed, and served the notice to do the deposition because during the period that all of this happened, I was the chair of the board at that time.
Oh.
So to make you aware, there is a court case between those two parties.
Okay.
Hopefully, the town stays out of it. I don't see any reason for us to get involved directly other than to...
I won't answer their phone calls.
I don't see any other reason to get involved in that. And I'll leave it at that. I will keep everyone updated, including you, Charlie, as to where that's going.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
You'll put it...
Ladies, anything further?
No.
No.
Trust him.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Mrs. Phillips makes the lawler motion, seconded by Mr. Gardner. All those in favor of adjournment, so signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.